At the council chambers at City Hall, 10 West State Street. Today's date is May 24, 2021, time is 5:30 PM. It is a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, also available by a device called GoToMeeting and also available by phone. Notice to the public as follows, the mayor and council welcome comment from the public during discussion of the, of any of the items on the agenda. To speak, you have to step to the microphone, give your name and address for the record, limit your time to present remarks for three minutes or less so others may be given the opportunity to speak, speak clearly and direct the comments to the mayor and council and not to any consular specifically. And it is at the discretion of the mayor and council to respond to specific questions and comments or to have staff respond during the meeting. Now that we have been called to order, will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Goudy.
Here.
Hoop.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Lottie Hoff.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Weren.
Very good, six out of seven tonight. Next comes mayor, consul and administrative comments with years of service. Joe Woody is celebrating his fifth year of service with the city, but there won't be any presentation here tonight. Would any of the consulars or city administrator like to make any comments before we move on to the consent agenda?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Want to continue my shout outs to businesses recovering from the tornado and the derecho. And this one's way overdue. Big Eight Tire, when someone's in your own backyard, you drive past it or walk past it every day and don't even notice it, but Jerry and Don did a great job of keeping that building and getting it restored, so shout out to them. And then, on a sidebar, a new business in town that I forgot to mention last week on the radio when I was talking about the new businesses down on 13th Street, the newest business down there is My Town Nutrition. So for everybody, welcome them to town as we continue to grow. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kind of excited about seeing the 13th Street Flying Elbow Restaurant on the way to get back to open too. I would, at this time, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Isom and Martin, let's call the roll.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Very good, that carried. One able, please read those items.
Approve of the minutes for the May 10, 2021 meeting, the bill list in the amount of $8,31,043.37. Approve liquor license renewals for Tannen Inc. at 125 East Main Street. Hy-Vee Party Room at 802 South Center Street. Approve the renewal applications for the state of Iowa retail cigarette, tobacco, nicotine and vapor licenses through June 30th at 22 for Walmart at 2802 South Center Street. Dollar General Store number 21858 at 104 West State Street. Dollar General Store number 2019 at 408 South Knight Street. Dollar General Store number 4206 at 2413 South Center Street. Michi Food Mart Inc., DBA as Food and Gas Mart, at 613 North Third Avenue. Walgreens at 5 East Anson Street. Fairway Store Inc. at 102 West Anson Street. Appointment of Sherri Coconer as the city alternate for the three public member seats on the Solid Waste Management Commission. Approve the April 2021 financial statements. Resolution authorizing the city of Marshalltown to request assignment of tax certificates for 918 North Fifth Avenue and 920 North Fifth Avenue held by Marshall County. Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the purchase of one 2019 Ford Edge from Jensen Ford for the price of $34,899 for the use in the police department as a detective vehicle and declaring certain property surplus property and authorizing the sale and disposal thereof to Jensen Ford of a 2011 Dodge Nitro for $7,500 and a 1992 Chevy cargo van for $900. Resolution approving contract change order number three for the East Merrill Hibbs Extension. Resolution accepting the offer from Iowa River Hospice Inc. for the city-owned lots in the VA O'Bluffs First Edition. Resolution approving temporary easement acquisition for the Diratio Damage Debris Removal Project, SMW 21001. And resolution approving amendment for the comprehensive plan of 2030, changing parcel 841801305005 to high-density residential. Resolution setting a public hearing for the voluntary annexation of 2430, 233rd Street in Marshalltown, Iowa, 50158. Resolution awarding the bid for the demolition of four properties to Lansing Brothers Construction Company, Inc. at the cost of $85,850.
Very good, thank you. That saved us about 45 minutes, I think, by having those on the consent agenda. Before going on to motions, I guess I should have mentioned too that we've had, we've made some changes consistent with the governor's pronouncement and CDC guidelines. So as you'll notice in this room, we are socially distanced and those that have been fully vaccinated, meaning after you've had your second shot, or if you only have one shot, you've had that shot plus two weeks, then you are allowed in this building to be without a mask. Let's go on to item G then, motions. Would you read the first item and I'll call for a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve a new liquor, Class C liquor license for Mama de Grados Pasta and Pizza at 2500 South Center Street.
Solicited a motion.
Please for approval. Second.
Very good. Goudy, Isom, any discussion?
Mama de Grados has new ownership, so they will be taking over on June 1st and have applied for a new license.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I don't anticipate this would be subject to public comment and Bethany's not here tonight, so let's just call the roll.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yeah.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
On to the second and last motion.
Motion to approve a new Class C liquor license for the Veterans Memorial Coliseum at 20 West State Street.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion on this one?
Quick question.
You bet.
This is a year-long license as opposed to a, as needed, three-day, is that, would that be correct?
That is correct. This is a license for the full year.
So we're getting one, a permanent license over there?
Jeff Hubbard's on the phone, too.
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rock Director, yes, this is a year-long one to get the liquor license for to have actual liquor for events and we just thought, in talking back and forth, that the best way to handle some of our smaller events, because we have a lot of smaller events that say only have 50 people in it, want to have a few drinks for a wedding reception, rehearsal dinner, things like that. And so this year-round license would let us handle those things a little bit easierly.
Are we going to store leftover liquor over there somewhere?
Yeah, we have a secured room down in the basement that only Jenny and I have keys for, that whatever's left from those events would get put down there. And we would be inventorying everything and keeping track of stuff after events.
Other questions or comments? Let's go ahead and open, unmute the mics for this one for 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
No.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. On to item H, resolutions. Would you read the first one, please, Madam Clerk?
Resolution approving an agreement with Bolton and Mink for the completion of a federal RACE grant application for the Highway 14 North Third Avenue corridor improvements.
Let me solicit a motion and second first.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Yes, so RACE is a new acronym. Last year, it was the Build Grant. RACE stands for Rebuilding America's Infrastructure with Sustainability and Equity. And this is really sort of focusing on projects in areas of persistent poverty. And so we had a really great application last year and it scored really well and we were, there was just too many for us to be considered, basically. And so everything that has been added into the qualifications for this year is things that will benefit Marshalltown and Highway 14 North Third Avenue projects. So we would like to utilize Bolton and Mink again to prepare this application as there is some different traffic analysis and other things that we don't have the ability to do and it's mostly stuff that they have done and just need to update. And so what you have before you is the resolution with their agreement to approve us applying, or to approve us having them prepare that application, which is due July 12th. So you will have another resolution before you at some point to approve applying for that grant as well. And this would be, I should say, this is looking at a grant that's probably in the neighborhood of 100% funding in the eight to nine million dollar range as well, so not a small grant.
Very good. Any questions, Jessica?
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Anticipated award date of the grant once applications are in in July?
Oh, gosh, I would think it would be probably three months. I'm assuming federal funding won't be available until October 1st, probably, so, but I'll let Greg.
Yeah, Greg Bissar with Bolton and Mink.
Can you get the mics so the people on the phone can hear?
Yes, Greg Bissar with Bolton and Mink. Anticipated award date is November 22nd is when they will make the decisions.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Let's go ahead and unmute for 10.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. And let's call the roll.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Very good, carried as well. Next resolution, please, one able.
Resolution accepting bid and authorizing the award a contract for the 2021 Trail Improvements Project, TRL 21001 in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa, in the amount of $495,872.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Discussion.
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rock Director, we put this bid out and we had a four bidders bid on it, one company bid on it, but their, their per bid amount for asphalt was about what the cost of it was, so city engineer Jay Cook had some concerns about their bid, called and talked to them, and within about five, 10 minutes, they sent a letter to say, to take their bid out of play. So we would like to award the second low bidder, which is construct at $495,000, which was just a little bit below our engineers' estimate costs. And again, this trail is going to pave from Mega Ten to the cover bridge across Lynn Creek and Main Street to Marion Street, about 1.75 miles of trails. And I just want to add that, starting today, they're out crack sealing and overlaying the rest of that section of trail from Grimes Farm all the way up to Riverview, so that will all be done by the end of this week.
Thanks, Jeff. Any questions or comments? Let's open the mics again.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. On to the next item.
Resolution rejecting all bids for the Anson Park Shelter renovation project PRK 20001 in the city of Marshalltown, Iowa.
Is there a motion to approve that one?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, very good, okay. Any discussion on this one?
Jeff Hubbard, Park and Rock Director, you know, last year, we put this out for bid and bids came in higher than we were anticipating, so we scaled back the project a little bit to try and get it within budget. I think due to the pandemic and the cost of things like wood at $6 a board and things like that, our costs still got up higher than what we were estimating. Our estimates were about $300,000 and the low bid was $400,000. So we don't feel comfortable proceeding with the project at this point and we will be, I guess, coming back with a plan, either for different things for Anson Park or possibly a recommendation using the money towards some other projects.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Any questions of Jeff or any comments by the consul? Let's go ahead and unmute for 10 again.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Okay, next item, one able.
Public hearing and resolution adopting the budget amendment for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021.
Okay, I'll declare that public hearing is open now and the time is 5:46 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Time to unmute all for public comments.
Lines are unmuted.
Let's go 10 again. Time for staff review.
Diana Steiner, Finance Director. So at the last council meeting, I went in pretty much in depth for the changes in the budget amendment. So what it boils down to is for revenues, we're increasing the budget by $15.5 million and we're increasing expenditures by $18.4 million. The reason for the big difference is due to the derecho. We've had lots of expenses, but we will not get FEMA money until next fiscal year or after. Does anyone have any questions? This does not affect the property tax levy.
Hearing no questions. Any consular comments before we unmute? No, wait, we already did that. Any consul comments? Okay. We will declare the public hearing is closed at 5:47 PM. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Roll call.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good, that carried as well. Onto the next category of ordinances. Would you read the first one, one able?
Ordinance 15018, providing for the division of taxes levied on taxable property designated as Section A of the Marshalltown Urban Renewal Area Number Six, pursuant to Section 403.19 of the Code of Iowa, third reading.
Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Just as a reminder, this is the third reading of the ordinance that establishes the Tiff District that was approved in the development agreement with Glenwood Marshalltown LLC for the development of residential lots off of West Merrill Hibbs in that area.
Thank you. Any comments or questions by the consul? Hearing and seeing none, let's unmute the mics again.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call on this one, please.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Very good. Onto the second item for ordinances, please.
Ordinance 15019, establishing a vacant property code, third reading.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
And discussion.
Housing Community Development Director, Michelle Spahnheimer. This is the third reading of the proposed vacant property code, which has been now before you several, several times, either in draft or full form, and so we'd be requesting approval of the ordinance.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
First of all, I want to apologize for not speaking up at the first or second reading, but it was by my lack of reading it thoroughly the first two weeks, first two times it's on the agenda. I did discover there's a couple loopholes in it that probably need to be closed and I struggle with their stronger language in a vacant property ordinance than there is in our occupied property ordinance. So I would like to meet with Michelle and possibly list the questions for legal advice. So therefore, I move to table this until the June 14th, is that the correct date? Until the June 14th meeting.
But I believe that does require a second. And so hearing none, is there any other discussion? Let's go ahead and unmute again.
The lines are unmuted.
Roll call.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
No.
Very good, that carried, one able, let's go on to the next item.
Ordinance 15020, to amend the Code of Ordnances, City of Marshalltown, Iowa, Sections 52.029 concerning wastewater rates. This is the third reading and I do need to note that there was a typo found on one of the rate tables.
Do you want me to bring it up?
Yeah, if you could bring it up. So it is on the second table, the second page, on the wastewater rate table. The, on letter C, the TKN per pound for 2022 should read 0.394, not .0394.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? I guess we probably ought to listen to the unmuted folks for 10 seconds, or the crickets or cicadas. Let's call the roll.
Your Honor, I need a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thought we had one. I would call for a motion.
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Now let's call for the roll.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Very good. That carried as well. Onto the fourth and last item in this category.
Public hearing in ordinance 15021, approving the rezoning of parcel 831801305005 to R5 High Density Residential District. This is the public hearing in second reading and they're requesting a waiver of the third reading.
And so we will declare that public hearing open at 5:54 PM. Did the clerk receive any written comments?
No, Your Honor.
Let's unmute for public comments for 10 seconds.
The lines are unmuted.
Okay, so much for public comments, staff review.
Here's Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Again, this is a rezoning request for the parcel located generally south of East Olive Street off of that South Seventh Avenue extension, going from an R2A zoning, which is a low-density residential, to an R5, which is a high-density residential district to allow for multifamily housing development. So this is the second reading in addition to the public hearing. The developer is requesting a waiving of the third reading on this one.
Time for consul comments. Hearing those same crickets, I'll declare the public hearing is closed at 5:56 PM and call the roll. Well, let's see, did I ask for any motion to approve the ordinance after the public hearing? If not, I would entertain that motion.
So. Go ahead, Gary.
Let's go. Thompson on the motion?
And waiving the third reading, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Second.
Very good. Roll call.
Lottie Hoff.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Goudy.
Yes.
Hoop.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Very good, thank you. And now we go on to discussion items, which is category J, the first of which is discussion of agreement for tourism and marketing with the Marshalltown area Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, I'm going to introduce this topic and then turn it over to Andrew with the chamber here. So just to, so that you're all aware, if you weren't already, that I am a member of the, the chamber board. This agreement for tourism and regional marketing was set for a one-year period last year, so it expires June 30th of, of this year. And so it is basically in need of doing something with it and so that is why it is here before you tonight. As I put in my memo, we did include in the budget basically the same terms in agreement as I put in my memo with backfill changes. I think that's something that we should discuss again, that I would recommend just basically a one-year agreement at that funding level if you so choose. And so, any questions for me before Andrew does his presentation?
Let's hear from Andrew.
Okay.
Good evening. I was here a few months ago, so I'll just probably give a few updates of what we've been working on since I was last here. Things are starting to pick back up again in the world of tourism and conferences and conventions as, as we've seen lately because of, we had a lull there with the pandemic, so we had to kind of get creative with a few things. But on this first slide, I'll go through these pretty quick. We hosted a Leadership Iowa Conference in May at the Coliseum, hosted one day, so Jeff and his team at Parks and Rec have been doing a great job with the Coliseum with some special events and meetings. That conference went very well and we got glowing reviews from that group. So we're looking forward and part of my job is to kind of be in touch with the hotels, be in touch with meeting planners, be in touch with statewide associations. So we got some future conferences coming up, as you can see on the slide there. So we, things are picking up later in the summer, in the fall, it seems like conferences are getting more at ease with coming back and meeting again in person, so that's a good thing for us as we look for more groups coming ahead down the pike here and, and we're hoping for more meeting spaces to open up here eventually. We had, we had a lull in some meeting spaces availability due to the ratio as well, but now with the Coliseum opening and the renovations going on at the college, we're, we're seeing more and more meeting space that'll eventually be usable in town, so. We also assist, my office assists with special events. We were at the Blessing of the Bikes and helped out with that event and different fairground concerts that were going on throughout the winter and they've continued as well. Those are just a couple of examples of the special events that we, that we work with in my office.
I shouldn't interrupt you, but I got to tell you, I was running out to the compost facility, I was amazed at the number of people that were at the Blessing of the Bikes. It was a big crowd.
Were you on a hog yourself?
No, they won't let me do that.
Okay.
I couldn't handle that.
Okay, that'd be cool with a bag over your shoulder or something, but, all right. And then so just through photos, social media and statewide advertising, we promote the different attractions in town, yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not a pillow, we don't have a tool festival, we don't have some of the things, but we do have some cool things in town that we help promote and, and that's why we have to, have to kind of try to work with different groups throughout town to try to, try to attract them. And I do community video projects, we kind of promoted that, we were kind of a pickleball capital in Marshalltown here of Iowa with, with the new Coliseum courts opening and the high school tennis courts, that also has, has four pickleball courts or three pickleball courts. The house has, has four pickleball courts or three pickleball courts and everything like that. So we're, we're trying to get creative as far as what, how we're trying to attract people. And speaking of sports, we're a nice central location for sports, so we're seeing a lot more of those pick up as far as tournaments. You'll see a picture there from the Roundhouse. Also, the Coliseum hosted that same volleyball tournament in early May, and that had our hotels full, and that was very nice to see. So, so we might not have, you know, the typical tourist attractions, but we're trying to focus on what we do have. And we have lots of great sports facilities in town here with our tennis courts opening, with the Roundhouse, with the College, with Coliseum. And so we're just trying to, trying to take advantage of that. And we, and our office kind of works to help these, these groups come into town. We also have tourism grants, which I'll talk about later, for some of these athletic events. And just trying to have Marshawn Town be a central location for sports. It's easy to get to. And so people like that, and you know, we don't have to have the parking and traffic headaches of a bigger city. So a lot of people that, that come into town like that, so. And as I mentioned, the tourism grants. So we take some of that hotel motel funds and tax funds, and we, we turn around and try to support people that are bringing people into town. So whether it's Oktoberfest, whether it's the Fourth of July fireworks coming up that we're really looking forward to. Few other things that are just the YMCA. I mentioned other athletic facilities. The YMCA pool brings lots of people into town. So, so yeah, we try to support the Y as well. So different, different things there, and we've, in the past, what, three years, we've granted 139,000. So that's kind of what we try to do, is to support those who are going to go to the effort and try to bring, bring people to town. We want to support them, so. Other projects, I also do the weekly This Week in Marshawn Town email event newsletter. Maintain the community calendar on our chamber Facebook, our chamber website. We also promote stuff on Facebook and social media and the HIV sign. We have different, different groups in town that I help lead, the Event Planners Discussion Group, Sport Group Leaders Discussion Group. We're, we're trying to attract more sports into town, as I said. And just try to get the word out about Marshawn Town to statewide, to different publications there. And then we also started, we've also partnered with Marshawn Town Community Television for a Made in Marshawn Town video series that we did this spring. So we're continuing to work with that until that contract is up with, with the city. But we continue to work with that. Future, some future plans we have. Just different video projects that we're going to continue to do. Like we're going to get some drone footage and do some drone footage of, of some of the areas in Marshawn Town, try to promote that. We're going to update our visitor's guide, and we're kind of going to beef that up a bit with some, some, not only visitor's guide, but to promote the community. And we're going to get thousands of those out there. And then also we're, we're working on another video series and marketing of young professionals who have moved back to Marshawn Town. And we've got a group that we started there, and we're trying to get them to kind of maybe convince some of their peers, hey, Marshawn Town's a nice place to raise a family, a nice place to live. So that's kind of one of the other marketing projects we're working on. That just kind of happened from a meeting recently of the Chamber Economic Development Committee, so. Well, with that, I think that's, that's it. So if anybody had any questions?
I've been getting calls from that, the group that's putting together the fabulous 50s reunion in Oktoberfest. That's going to be a big deal.
That's going to be, that's a lot of fun. I've been doing some meetings with them as well. From 1950 to 1959, if you graduated from MHS, they're all coming back into town, and they're going to have a blast. It's going to be, it's going to be a lot of fun out there, so.
I can't, I can't wait. They're really excited about it.
Oh, they're really excited. They're going to be riding in the parade. They're going to be, they're going to be all over town. So it's going to be a lot of fun, so, yeah.
Any questions or comments for Andrew? Thanks for the good report.
Thanks for your time, guys.
Okay, well, that's kind of the, the fun topic, and now let's segue into the.
I, I was just going to say, so basically what I'm looking for is a motion to bring back that agreement to the next meeting and to, if you're in agreement with the terms of a one-year agreement for 67% of hotel motel tax.
Do you want to make a motion to that effect?
Your Honor, may I ask Jessica a question now?
You may.
After the presentation. Jessica, this, we're talking about $268,000 that we're estimating, right?
Correct.
Why aren't we putting this out for bid?
It's, it's been a longstanding relationship, I believe, ever since the hotel motel tax was implemented. And so the, the chamber still has those capabilities to provide those services, which we have expanded in the, in the last year to include the regional marketing aspect. And so not putting it out to bid because of it's, it's basically the longstanding agreement.
But wouldn't this be a good time to test the water, to see what's out there, right on the heels of putting the $40,000 request for proposal out there for marketing, specifically to market Marshawn Town using the MIC TV money? Do you think with those organizations jumping on that one, don't you think it would be in our best interest financially to see if those organizations could market Marshawn Town at $268,000?
Well, so I mean, there's, there's different things provided, and so there's a specific scope of work in the contract, which I think I can bring up here. So you're talking about there's the maintenance of things that are owned by the chamber. There is the marketing plan campaign, which could be done by anybody else. Hospitality materials, again, those could be done by somebody else, but it's typically the chamber that's done it. The same with the convention meeting services and the community event planning coordination. And so the 67% is, is basically what I would say is a historical percentage as well. And so that's where I go back to, you know, that could always be changed as well, too. And as I've said, we should at least be looking at that for not this upcoming fiscal year, but the fiscal year after that as backfill starts to phase out. So if you want to make a motion to direct me to put this out to bid, we certainly could figure out what is the, what is the stuff that could not be, or, you know, like the community calendar and the electronic message board. If that's something we still want to fund, then that wouldn't be asking somebody else necessarily to do that.
The only reason I'm asking these questions, Jessica, is that I think the chamber does a great job. I just think that times have changed, and there's other avenues. As, as the stewards of the taxpayers' money, I mean, we, by law, we can keep all this money and promote or, or improve things ourselves without promoting the community. I mean, why should we continue to help hotels sell their banquet services? I mean, if you look at the presentation that Andrew just did, the, the great presentation, I mean, you have the high school that should be in it for themselves, you know, trying to, to attract things to the new tennis courts and their facilities. You know, we have the Coliseum. We should be looking at that to keep that full. The softball complex, we have the board that oversees that. And, you know, we have the parks. You know, not taking away that, that they work with these other organizations, you know, the paranormals, the, the 50s reunions and things like that, that I'm sure Roger will attend. So, but the, I'm just saying that with the, not knowing what the backfill is, this is a lot of money that we're giving away that we could use ourselves. This money could have been used to pave the parking lot at the Sixth Street Diamonds by law. This money could have been used to spend some of this money we just spent on the trails. I mean, those are all things that would fall under this. So I would, I would say, I would make a motion that we put this out for bid or, and at the very least have the right to refuse any of those bids and, and actually talk to the department heads and think about bringing this back in-house. I mean, should the taxpayers support us, the staff of Marshawn Town, and support people in the private sector? Is that what the taxpayers are being asked to do? And I'm saying now's the time to test the water with this. So I would move that we put this out for bid, if nothing else. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. I'll take that as a motion. Is there a second to that? Hearing none. Is there a motion to direct staff to continue to renew this sort of arrangement again this year?
So I'll move, Your Honor.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Let's go ahead and invite further discussion. Well, we actually did have discussion. I don't think we unmuted the mics, though, did we?
We haven't allowed for public comments.
Let's go ahead and unmute this time.
The mics are unmuted.
Thank you. Okay, roll call.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
No.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Hoop?
No.
Isom?
Yes.
Okay, that one carried. Let's go on to the next discussion item, which is the sanitary sewer connection to Sixth Street, the Sixth Street parcel.
Yes, so related to Glenwood Marshawn Town LLC, which you mentioned earlier in the, the TIF rebate agreement in the TIF ordinance discussion, they have basically gotten all the bids back for their work, and things have come in much higher than what they had anticipated. And so at this point, they came to us with a, a request to basically amend the development agreement. Well, I shouldn't say that was their request. Let me, let me back up. They came to us and said, we have this problem with that triangular prop, or parcel on Sixth Street that is just south of the church, which is that sanitary sewer has to come from Terry Terrace and basically be bored underneath Sixth Street in order to access that area. And so as we talked about it internally, this is not just a Glenwood Marshawn Town LLC problem. This will be an issue for anybody who would be looking to do anything on this lot. It would not be allowed to have septic because there is the connection within the, the area. It would not be something that we could even probably, we'd have to do this to use it as a park if you were, because you'd want bathrooms there sort of on a year-round basis as well. And so I, I said that I would bring this before you to kind of have the discussion of really, this is something that we'd be looking at that would be sort of the future of this parcel of is it usable or is it not usable? And so the amount that they have estimated, that they have gotten back from their vendors who have quoted this, is $271,000. And that is just for the sanitary sewer infrastructure. And so if you want to move forward, there are funds in the sanitary sewer fund. You know, we just did the rate study, and it showed that there was cash on hand to, to handle smaller projects that would come up. And so it's really no recommendation here. It's really, what do you want to see for that, that parcel? But it really sort of has given us the full story in terms of what the future of that parcel could be, that it's probably, if, if this developer doesn't do it now, then it's probably not going to be something that will be done later either.
Any questions or comments? We need staff direction in some form?
Yeah, we, we would. This would be an amendment to the development agreement, and so that's where we'd be looking to bring something back to the next meeting, if you would like us to do that.
Would it include kind of a pros and cons of what if we do, what if we don't?
No, that's before you right now. So you get development or you don't. So that's your pro and your con.
What's the con on if we don't get the development? What's the opportunity here if we do it and it is developed?
Yeah, so what they have proposed is basically four lots that would be here. So you would be basically creating four parcels that would then have a taxable value with them eventually. Again, they're not the builder, so it's hard to say what would be here in terms of property to be able to give you an idea of what, what an estimated, you know, construction value would be or anything. So it's hard to tell you what that looks like, but at least at this point, in the way that this has been plotted, is that it would create four lots versus the one lot that currently exists.
Thank you. If there aren't any other, go ahead.
Jessica, this is Trent. I, I don't want to interrupt. I am Trent Smith, mcclure engineering, the civil engineer on this project, and Jessica did a great job providing the background on it. And I'll just give you kind of a little peek behind the curtain on kind of the engineer and the developers perception on this triangle piece. So it was our intent to develop this little triangle parcel as part of the Glenwood Park project. When we were in early design processes, we discovered the Sixth Street does not have any sanitary sewer. So like Jessica laid out, we would get an extension of that sanitary sewer to service these four parcels. And the intention is that these four properties would be two duplex units, similar to the one south of Merlehead. So ideally, a little higher-end kind of duplex townhome-type product in this area, and that is what the sanitary will service. When we found out there wasn't a sanitary along Sixth Street, we had our bidders kind of itemize the, the development number for development of this triangle piece. And Jessica laid out that number, that 271 is just the sanitary sewer. I think the total all-in number was 400 something. I, I don't have it on hand. But since this is like a TIF-related project that was kind of talked about earlier in these phases, we just wanted to be good stewards of those dollars. If this was an extension that would service 20 lots or something like that, you know, our developer would move forward with this, with this extension with, with no issue. Since it's just four lots, we had them itemize it. The issue really is there's going to need to be certain construction methods to get that extension up to the triangle piece. So we would bore instead of open cut, the sanitary sewer under Sixth Ave. And then there's a 14-inch water main that would need to probably be rerouted either over or under the sanitary sewer. So that, you know, that's kind of a high-cost item, plus the boring. And then ultimately, you know, as, as being good stewards of these TIF dollars, we want to make sure that Marshawn Town sees those tax dollars back eventually. So we itemized this. In, you know, if this wasn't a TIF project, if TIF dollars weren't involved, it would probably be dead already just because it doesn't pencil out financially for a developer. Jessica just put this before you tonight, asked the question, does it pencil out for the city of Marshawn Town? Are those dollars, you know, used in a way that either meets your goals from a tax revenue standpoint or meets your goals just from a development standpoint, if people want to see units there and not this empty triangle piece? Ultimately, you know, what's likely to happen is if, if that sewer doesn't get paid for, our developer is not likely to develop that piece, just with the cost associated with, with that triangle parcel. But he would likely end up trying to, you know, either work with the city to make it a park that was thrown out there. But like Jessica said, you know, if you're going to use restrooms, we're going to have to extend the sanitary sewer for that. So it would potentially be a restroomless park. Or maybe work with the church if they wanted to expand their park. And those are kind of the two options that, just at first glance, kind of made sense, but nothing is set in stone. So that just, I guess, provides maybe a little bit of additional insight for discussion. But I'm here to answer any questions, if anyone needs anything else.
Thanks, Trent. Ms. Martin?
Question to Jessica, and I'm jumping ahead a bit. Does this have any appropriate value for, for the rescue plan? Is this even feasible under that plan? I know we're at, we've got a discussion coming up, but this one, could it qualify?
So I, we, we looked at that, and what I would say is no, because it is, it is not in the census tract of high poverty in the community. And so that's what really those dollars are trying to target. And so that's where I would, I would say that. And, and then, you know, we'll talk about it on the next item, too. But we really looked at what was being targeted in the American Rescue Plan, and this just didn't fit.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Jessica, this $271,000 cost, is that what Trent said about moving the water line, and that's everything? That's all-inclusive?
I believe that 271 does include the water line, doesn't it, Trent?
Yes, it includes everything related to the sanitary sewer extension itself. So there's some high transmission lines there, so anything that would be necessary to protect those or relocate those, you know, slightly to get that sanitary sewer in, that number includes all of the above for getting the sanitary sewer, just the main installed to those properties.
And then Trent, you said it'll be two duplexes, is what the builder's going to put in?
Yes, that is the plan. Yep. Similar to the unit south of Merlehead, if you're familiar with, with those.
Yes, the white, the new white ones? Or you're talking about the, the existing ones?
Yep, I think, I would imagine it'd be the, the new white ones, yep.
Okay. So the question for Jessica then is, how many years does it take us to recoup, considering that we'll never, we'll never recoup the taxes on these four? Because what is it, 59% goes to low to moderate income?
So I, I would say this is one of those things where you wouldn't be looking to recoup. And I would say your analysis would probably be best with your sanitary sewer rates. And I would say for residential users would probably. And I would say for residential users would probably take quite a few years to recuperate $271,000. And so, yeah, so this is, this, as we internally looked at the discussion, this is really not about recouping anything. It's just this very large lot that sits there and is very noticeable. And so, this is that time of is it development or is it not development? And, you know, there, there is an option to participate. So, but I, I would say on any calculation, your, your, the recoupment would be many, many, many years down the road.
Especially because the TIF agreement in this, the Glenwood Park, the agreement we made?
Yes.
It would be faster return on our investment if it wasn't for that TIF agreement?
It, it'd be a, a little bit faster, yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I know that there's been some discussion about possibly a park or something like that, but just because we have empty property doesn't necessarily mean that's a proper place to put a park. And how does that fit into our overall scheme of things, I guess?
Yeah, and so, this is an area where, let me see if I can bring it up. We actually do have land in this area, not this, which has been sort of designated in a partnership with the school district for possibly a new school with the park. And so, this parcel right here is owned by the city. This parcel right here owned by the school district. And so, we do see that as this residential neighborhood would continue to fill in and develop and, you know, right now, we're just talking about these sections right here, that a park would be necessary. But ultimately, it would be, I would say you would need a bathroom in this park because it's landlocked. So, there's no parking coming from, or no parking available for this unless you're parking on a side street and walking around. So, it truly would be something serving the neighborhood that people could walk to. And it would be kind of something if you couldn't just easily probably run home to go to the bathroom. And so, that's where, as we looked at it, you know, it's probably not the most suitable for a park to serve this entire subdivision area as it develops. But would still need to require that sanitary sewer to be able to have restrooms and facilities there.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Jessica, have we, can you pull that slide back up, please? Have we contacted those, that's Eighth, Eighth Street, right?
Correct.
Have we contacted those homeowners to see if they want bigger backyards?
We don't own the land, so it would be the developer's responsibility to do that. And I believe that's one of the things that they've, they've mentioned in terms of just adjacent landowners, that there are multiple that are there.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I agree with Mike that I don't know that a park off Sixth Street right there is necessarily the ideal spot for a park in my mind. Traffic and the amount of cars going up and down there is quite high. I mean, it's a north-south corridor through town. So, secondly, from a housing perspective, going to have to continue to build houses somehow. So, I guess it's just, do we want to take a bite from the sanitary sewer fund and continue to get four, what I would say qualified lots from additional housing onto the books, even if we're not going to recoup all of our costs? I think we're going to have, regardless of where we put houses, one way or the other, we're going to make some, some type of financial investment one way or the other. So, is this one of those ones?
Good question.
I'd be in favor of proceeding.
Your Honor?
Ms. Merton?
I see this as an investment. Not all investments are gold mines. However, I think that's practical use for this property. And I would like to move ahead with this.
Thank you. Could I take the suggestion as a motion and the agreement as a second?
I'm good with that.
I am too.
Very good. Let's, I guess we haven't unmuted mics on this one yet. Let's try that too.
Yep, the mics are unmuted.
Okay. And if any consular wishes to speak up in this time, let's open the mics for us to... Okay, so much for discussion. Let's take the roll call.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thank you. That carried. So, staff has its direction.
Your Honor?
Yes.
May I ask Jessica a follow-up question?
You may.
Can we cap that, that all the change orders don't come into the agreement? That can we, you said two, you know, Trent said 271. Can we put, put all the onus on him if they run into something out there?
Certainly, yeah.
Okay. Before going on to the next discussion item, it is, as we know, one of the major goals here is to increase the housing stock given the shortages that the chamber helped us figure out that we have here. So, I personally am glad to see that moving forward. Let's go on to item number three for discussion. That's a follow-up on South Seventh Avenue infrastructure.
Well, that was a perfect segue, Your Honor. So, this was an item that we talked about at the last council meeting, but with a very different concept. And so, this is the developer HCI who has partnered with JBS. And we do have Garrett from CGA who is here to answer any questions if needed. And so, really what we're looking at here was, you know, the, the previous concept was running right along the creek and Councilor Thompson made the comment about that really just doesn't leave a lot of developable land. It also cut off the, the developer's land as well. And so, this keeps the, the South Seventh Avenue to a shorter distance at the northern side of the property and realistically then still provides kind of this whole area here for the development. And so, the concept that I wanted to bring up was the larger one here that kind of showed how things could lay out. So, we're talking about, again, we don't want a dead-end streets. We've, we've been doing that for years and that's what we're trying to get around. And so, we do want to talk about having concepts for how things sort, sort of start to develop or what they could look like. And ultimately, it would be trying to make that South Seventh Avenue connection there. So, there would be sort of a curvature and then ultimately looking at a, some road coming in off of Governor Road at some point. So, this is that larger connection there. So, now down to the, the, kind of the brass tacks on things. The CGA did break things down. Total cost for the street is $820,000. There's about $63,000 worth of sanitary sewer, another $236,000 worth of storm sewer, which leaves, if we use the proprietary funds to fund those, those portions, it leaves $520,000 remaining. From the last meeting, we talked about there was $236,000 in road use tax that was available as just a special payment that the state gave us that, just because we're, we're awesome in Marshalltown, I guess, which covers a, a good portion of that. I do want to kind of skip around here because this was another project that I looked at for the American Rescue Plan funds. But again, this is in a census tract that just doesn't have the same poverty levels as some of the others that we do have in the community. And so, that's why it's not being considered because it really would be probably more difficult to justify to the feds when we have to justify those dollars. So, council-designated local option sales tax is what I'm listing is what I'm calling the next most available source of funds. I understand the hesitancy in designating any of that funding. We do have some bonds that are going to be wrapping up here. I, I was going to say Diana left, but we do have some things that would be happening. As Jeff mentioned, he's going to be relooking at, you know, Anson Park funds and then probably come back with a conversation about what to do with those. And so, I would say our goal would to, would be to not use any of those council-designated local option sales tax funds, but ultimately have some other options to reduce that amount completely or much less than $284,000 by the time the project was, was said and done. And so, that's the, that's the thing kind of with a pledge of the local option sales tax is it gives us the ability to say, we know that there's money there, we can begin working with the developer on an agreement. But it, it challenges us as staff to make sure that, you know, we don't just stop there and that we continue to look at ways that we can make some things happen. So, this is what I have. As I mentioned, Garrett's here if you have any questions about the concept as well. But I do appreciate CGA, Heather with CGA and the work that she was able to do on this project as well to really sort of think outside the box, reduce the price tag by $700,000, give or take, and make it look like something that we, we actually could fund here versus something that was going to be very difficult.
So, Gary was right.
Well, we don't, we, we can say that.
You can say yes.
Gary, Gary was right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
For the record.
And let me just add to that, Mr. Lottie Hoff, that from what I was told from a representative of the developer, enough can't be said for what Heather did at CGA. And I don't know how much Garrett had input in that. But after our discussion at the last meeting, cooler heads prevailed. And it sounds, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but it sounds like they're both, everybody's happy with this, this alternative. So, but no, I was not right.
Other questions or comments by the console? Otherwise, we could open it up for the public?
Your Honor, I just have one question.
Go ahead and ask.
How much of this in the pink has to be developed at this time? I mean, how much, how much driveway do they need to do what they need to do right now? Can we, can we do less than this with the agreement that later we will finish this out on their property?
I, I would say you would need it all. You're going to have a driveway access issue with that single-family parcel that is there as well. That's pretty well landlocked and so, you're, you're going to need to take it to the property line.
Well, their driveway now goes down to the west.
Across privately-owned, what's now going to be privately-owned land. So, they've not been able to find any easement or anything that allows that driveway to be there. So, the intention was that you would hook up basically that to the new street because that could be usable space for the developer for some amenity or something else.
By law, they're not grandfathered in with an easement?
I, I don't know the legal part of it, but that is just what, there's nothing recorded with the, the property.
So, we can't get by this year with doing something short of... I mean, is that a question for Garrett? I mean, is that, I mean, is that in your conversation with the developer?
Likely, yeah, but what we talked about, sorry. I don't do this often, so if I pass out, catch me.
Tell us who you are.
We have one of those units out in the hallway. You're good.
Garrett Jacobs with CGA. Yep, from discussions we've had with Heather, it'd probably be smartest to take it around to the end. I mean, as far as you could with the property that you do purchase. And bringing him out onto that side street where you don't have to worry about getting an easement or have to worry about looking stuff up in the past to see if he's grandfathered in somehow. I feel like this is probably your best option. Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, let's try the unmute again.
The lines are unmuted.
This is Ryan with HCI. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can. Go ahead. Go ahead, Ryan.
So, the timeframe, the, the timeframe we've promised this project is we want to have the first, the first building open within six months and occupied. So, I guess the timeframe of putting the street in is kind of, it's critical, but we're hoping to, we're hoping to working with the city and whatever, whatever, however we can to make this project successful. If we can build the street as we're doing the construction or at least we have access to get the first building up and operable, we're open to any suggestions here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're about six seconds into the 10. Let's go another, let's go another six seconds. All right. You would like a motion, I would bet?
Yes, I would. Ultimately, we'd be looking to put together a development agreement, which would be similar to two others you've seen with Kading Properties and Prime Development Group and bring back to the next meeting.
Remind me about how many units we're talking about, too?
103.
Currently, yes, we're at 103 units.
Thank you. Would anybody like to make a motion to direct staff to work on that agreement to come back to us?
I'll put a motion out there to proceed as proposed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
There we go. I think we've had enough discussion. Let's go ahead and take a vote.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Goudy?
Yes.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Lottie Hoff?
Yes.
Very good. Staff has direction on that one as well. Let's go on to number four, discussion of 101 West Main Street structural report.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave Michelle to answer any specific questions you might have. But we had Tomatich Engineering go in and check out the building and there certainly are some issues. But we wanted to bring it for you with the question of, you know, there's certainly some paths we can go down towards getting better estimates of what it would cost to save what is recommended is savable. But then also, we could go down the path of putting this out for bid for demolition. So, I'll, I'll leave the rest up to Michelle.
Well, Michelle's coming up. This is the building that's kitty-cornered to the northwest from Willards, I think.
Yes, this is the former Purple Cherry is probably the most commonly referenced at this point. So, yes, Michelle Spahnheimer, Housing Community Development Director. Yeah, so this is the, the property on the corner. It'd be the northwest corner of First Street and Main Street. As you have before you the report, we did have a structural engineer go through the building. Essentially, the, the roof has significant damage and really is a total loss. The second, or the, the floor in between has been impacted and is failing in certain areas between the first and second floor. Essentially, the back third of the building, so the northern third of the building is where he felt there was really that, that part was a concern and not structurally salvageable. So, we're looking at the main floor, the southern two-thirds of the building is what, if anything, would be savable on this, on this building. We did also have asbestos inspection just completed last week. We won't have that report for another probably couple of weeks to know what we're dealing with as far as asbestos remediation that would be required. Whether you try to salvage part of the building or demolish, you know, we still have to deal with asbestos no matter what that situation includes. So, trying to get a grasp on that, certainly some of it you would not be able to abate when you have the roof that's collapsed. You have to treat a lot of that should it come back with asbestos as, as a hot site. And you can't really go in and abate, that kind of situation is not safe for contractors to do that. So, there's multiple things that we are looking at with that. But we just wanted to bring the report before you and know that there was interest in seeing if the property was salvageable or not. There's a lot of concern about water damage that has basically infiltrated through the walls that, throughout the, the building. And so, you see some of the rust on the windows that he describes and cracks in the parapet and things of that nature, so.
As I understand it, the former owners sold it to somebody out of town. Is there any interest in the present title holder to salvage the building?
We are the present title holder.
We, we got the title?
We, we own the, yes. This is, this is the city's building. It was ordered by court order through the 657A process.
Okay.
Is this a common wall or is this separate?
There, there is a common wall shared with the antique placed on by McGregor's. And so, that is an issue that certainly when we start talking about removal, this report did not get into those specifics of what would need to be done to ensure the safety of that separation with some other... With some other sites, you do see where things are cut and stuff to minimize impact. We do have some shared wall funding that remains as, from the state, that we could certainly, you know, look at those kind of options to try to make repairs that are necessary. Goal would be to, of course, minimize the impact on those. We don't fully know what we're dealing with at this point on that.
And funding sources for this are still, we're waiting to see what?
This is not one that was included in FEMA. The FEMA funding for demolition was related to the derecho. This was all tornado-related damage.
Thank you. Other questions for Michelle?
Your Honor, if I may?
You may.
Michelle, what would it cost us to, just to get quotes, to save the first floor, two-thirds of the building? According to this, that's the only part that's salvageable. So if the second floor was taken off, the back one-third of the building, and then the first floor would have to be re-roofed.
Right.
What would it cost us to get those quotes?
Uh.
Including, let's assume the worst, that there is asbestos.
Right. I mean, I would assume we would have to hire somebody to develop those specifications for us, to make sure that we've, you know, we've worked with, I can't think of the name of the firm that has done some of our other demolition.
Well, I would say just more than likely, we could have Tomatich Engineering do a little bit more.
Yeah.
To give us a better estimate.
Do you have a dollar figure range?
I've not gotten a quote from him on that.
The asbestos testing alone was $8,500.
Okay. The reason I'm asking this is, from our prior experiences with the shared walls, you know, we're not batting very good average on that, so I would hate to see this whole building come down, because you're talking about a, is that a three-story building, the antique store? Two, a tall two-story? It's a very tall, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you would be removing two stories that you're going to have to deal with.
I'd like to save the building, or at least part of it, and maybe, you know, a little parking area, green space behind it. I'd like to know all of our avenues before we decide to tear it down, I guess. I'd like to, that's what I'm asking, so. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome.
Your Honor.
Mr. Isom.
I'd be concerned with any portion of a remodel or otherwise. I mean, even if you take off a portion of the building, you're still running into shared wall possible issues. Just because you don't tear it all down doesn't mean you're not exposing some of that, so I'd still be concerned that you possibly uncover something and then we get ourselves into a bigger mess. I mean, I think one way or the other, anything doing with the building is going to be a pretty large gamble, and I don't know, I'd hate to see the darn thing torn down, but I think either way, we're going to have something on our hands, and whether it's going to be a shared wall, which maybe is an easier fix than trying to do the unknown, what I would call probably be high cost to do anything to fix it.
Follow-up question, Your Honor?
Sure.
So if we tear it down, to Gabe's point, that's, that's 100, either way, it's 100% out of our pocket, because we're not getting any help on this one.
Yes, all expenses are going to be out of the city. Yeah, there is no, there is no other, like FEMA support, as we've been talking about with some of the other buildings, to support this demolition or rehabilitation.
And we didn't take donations at the door when all these people came in, did we?
I didn't.
All right.
And again, the insurance company didn't hold any.
We did, it did not meet the threshold requirements for the insurance reserve. We did have that investigation report just came back.
I guess, Your Honor, I guess I'd like to see just a little bit more information before we decide to tear it down. We've got an awful lot of holes in Main Street, and if there's a good possibility of keeping part of the building, then I would probably swing that way. But I'd like to, I'd like to have some more information on it to make sure that we don't end up with a pick and a poke like Gabe said.
Is it possible Tomatich Engineering can come up with an estimate of the percentage of chance that we aren't going to hurt a common wall?
I'm sure that we can have them go in and do additional, you know, there would be additional expense, you know, into having them do that more detailed investigation on what would be required in terms of that, and that's certainly something I can approach them with and have them come up with a cost estimate to do that work or to move forward if it's within, you know, just because of authority.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Either way, we have to get the asbestos analysis done, right?
Yeah.
If we, if it's a partial tear down or a complete tear down, we've got to know what we're dealing with. Is that correct?
Yeah, the asbestos has already been, that part, we don't have the report back, but they did the, they did a testing.
But that removal has to take place no matter what we do.
Correct. It would either be treated, we would either be able to, if we were able to abate, if we were thinking we're going to try to save portions of the building, and we were able to abate the asbestos that's there, we would have to do that. If we can abate and demolish is an option. If abatement is really not an option due to the level of damage, then you're treating the entire site as basically a hazardous site, and so. A lot of that will depend on what those samplings come back in those results.
What if this council gave you a direction to go back to Tomatich and do a little more research and come back to us at the next meeting? Or how long it takes?
Yeah, it might, yeah, it might take a little bit longer than that, just depending on when he can get in there and how long it takes him to put together that information, but we can certainly do that.
Does anyone know what it costs McGregor's to tear off the top floor?
McGregor's?
Yeah, Aaron, right?
I don't, I don't know that specifically. I mean, we've had a couple of situations where we've had, you know, floors removed. I don't know it off the top of my head, though, yeah.
That might be something we can find out, too, I suppose. McGregor's got hit twice, too. They had the other, on the very south end, toward the east side, building problem, too. I really don't want to cause them any more headaches, if we can avoid it. And it would be nice to know if we could get an engineer's report to know what the chances are.
We can definitely move forward with that.
Yeah, any other?
Got a motion?
Okay. Well, Mr. Gary, we'll take that as a motion. Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Let's, I don't think we've unmuted yet, have we? Let's do that as well.
While we're unmuting, we might as well start gauging interest for an empty line if somebody's interested from a developer standpoint.
Right, exactly.
The lines are unmuted.
Thank you. Let's call for the vote.
Hoop?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Loti-Hoff?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gowdy?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. You know, we forget just how much pressure we put on the staff to handle all the things that have happened after a tornado, and then we doubled it up with the derecho, so we sure appreciate the work that you're doing to try to help us dig out from these two major events. Onto the next item, which is a discussion of the four-year 2022 library budget. Anybody like to lead that discussion?
I will, Your Honor. I ask that this be put on the agenda. A couple disclaimers before I begin. I can safely say that I am the biggest user of the library that sits here on the council. I believe in the library. I believe in their wanting to do an addition. I believe in the bookmobile. I believe in all that. So tonight, I want to limit, if I can ask, the people that are here. I mean, you guys do a great job. This isn't about what you do and don't do. This is about two simple questions that I asked Sarah after the April board meeting, and I should have, I apologize to her, I should have gone to the board and not to her, because the board made the decision to continue to keep the library closed on Saturdays throughout the summer until Labor Day. So, and again, any questions that I can ask, I really can't ask, because the library is governed by a separate board that we have no control over. I mean, you guys can have 1,000 staff members or one staff member. You can buy all new books or buy no new books. I mean, we can't control that. Alls we can control is your budget. So the only issue I want to bring up tonight is, it's very simple. When the taxpayers voted for the levy to, for enhanced services, you know, I, like all other taxpayers, believed the library was going to be open seven days a week. We were voting to open, go from six days a week, going to vote to seven days a week. So with that said, the board voted to keep the library closed on Saturdays post-COVID, now that we're winding down, and I had an issue with that, because I have a responsibility to the taxpayers that I truly believe the levy was voted in to give the library the funding to be open seven days a week. I'm not questioning the services. I'm not questioning the enhanced services with COVID, you know, the curbside pickup, you know, everything. It's as simple as that, that services, based on what previous summers were, not the services, but the contact hours that you're open, the library is open, is a 27% decrease in services. So there's where my issue is, is I guess I want to hear why, just specifically on the levy, you know, if someone truly believes that that's not what the taxpayers were thinking when they voted for it, I'm open to hear that. And the only other way I can put this in perspective, if Chief Tupper decided to not respond to calls, he'd always been servicing the public 24 hours, seven days a week, and he decided to reduce his services by 27%, that would mean 45 hours you would not get a police officer if you called. The same with Chief Ryerson in the fire department. You know, that would be a 27% reduction in contact hours would be equal to 45 hours for the fire department. Your house would burn down until the 46th hour, and they came to put out the ashes. Okay? So alls I want to bring up to the council is, if the library, if the voters thought that the levy was to be open seven days a week, and the library board is choosing not to be open seven days a week, do we have an obligation to lower their budget next year to correspond to what the levy was supposed to do, in my opinion? So that's what I'm bringing out today for discussion, is if you agree with me and think the library should be, the levy was voted to go to seven days a week, and the board is not doing that, we can't change that. We don't have jurisdiction over their board, but we do have jurisdiction over their budget. So that's what I'm asking for.
The floor is open for discussion, ma'am.
Your Honor, Mary and I have had this discussion.
Maureen Lyons.
Maureen, will you hang on just a minute? Somebody beat you to the punch here. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Gary and I have had this discussion many, many times, and Gary is equating a building being open with services. The library does so many other outreach programs to make up for that, but the reason, the true reason to get down to it is staffing. They don't have the staffing available. Now, of any department that we have, any department, they have been through hell, whether it's the coronavirus themselves, there's a whole lot of other issues, but it goes into HIPAA that I can't talk about. We've had problems hiring people because of our personnel manager had issues. So as they hire ahead, which they've done, to people, they're planning on getting back to it, and they feel the best way forward to do that is in September, and I'm absolutely okay with that, with everything that they're handling right now, you know. In the last six months, I've talked to hundreds of people, and my ward uses the library more than anybody, okay? Not one person said, you know what, we ought to make that library be open on Saturday, because they understand what a pandemic means and how that screws up everything. If you look at how, when you walk in here, this isn't open, this building, correct? The library is, okay? They have the same security issues, you know. I think our library staff has done an excellent job, and I'm just not interested in talking about cutting a budget when they've gone over and above. The library board is watching them, and they don't look like some kind of nefarious bunch that, you know, we really got to keep an eye on, right? And it's under their guidance that they do this. If you read the code for the library, it specifically says, what the library board does is direct and control all affairs of the library, okay? We are merely the funding source. So if we want to start playing like the Gestapo or something, we're going to choke them off on money until they do what we say, I'm not for that at all. You know, I'm sorry I get a little bit emotional about this, but every couple of weeks, we get up here and we talk about our employees and how great they are. In our library, we're talking about this, are great, okay? So now we're going to make you work some more, including now you can work overtime on top of everything else that's been piled on top of the staff. So I understand what you're getting at. We've gone through this several times, Gary. I'm sure you're not surprised at all with my comments.
I would like to make one correction here. Mr. Loti-Hoff, Councilmember Loti-Hoff, you mentioned that our HR manager for the city was resulting in delays in staffing.
Yes.
That is not correct. She's not here tonight to respond to that, but I will have her send you all out and email tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. I stand corrected.
Related to that, so.
Thank you.
Hi, Maureen Lyons, may I speak?
You may, Maureen. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Maureen Lyons. I'm a longtime board of trustee, member of the library, and we appreciate all the support you've given the library, Gary. I know you are a great user of it. The library actually has plans in place to be able to open within the next two weeks on Saturdays. The staffing has gone forward with more people being able to come on board, so that's good news. The, in April, at the April board meeting you referenced, Gary, we did form a special subcommittee to look into this, and they reported at the main meeting, and so we're going to be able to go forward with opening seven days a week, which is good news. I'd also like to state that many other libraries lagged far behind the Marshalltown Public Library in opening during the pandemic. I have library cards at Ames and Des Moines Public Library, and they were much, much slower than opening to the public. I tried to go to the Ames Public Library in February, and they still were not allowing patrons inside the library to browse, so our library has done an excellent job of accommodating patrons during the pandemic, so I want to recognize them for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Maureen. Anyone else either up on the council dais or out on the telephone, I guess? Are we unmuted now?
We are not.
Let's go ahead and.
We are right now.
We are unmuted now. Okay, thank you.
I'm Joelle Laville. I'm the Youth Services Manager.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy, Joelle just got up to the microphone just ahead of you about a second or two, so we'll get back to you, Judy.
I just wanted to clarify that our current plan is that we will be open on Saturday starting, I believe it's July 11th, whatever the Saturday is. So we will be back to a seven-day-a-week plan in July, and then after Labor Day, which is typically the time that our library switches to different hours anyway, and the time that the staff schedule is usually redone for the school year, we plan to expand back to the accreditation requirement, actually three hours beyond that, to be accredited as a public library of our size, to 58 hours. So we have the plan in place. I guess, I guess I would just reiterate the same point that Councilor Loti-Hoff made, that it's a false premise to say that access to the building and library services are the same thing, and that pretty much puts us in a category as we're building monitors of a warehouse of books. And I've worked for the library for 21 years, and I've had that characterization actually made before, and that is absolutely incorrect, and everybody who loves and uses the library knows that's incorrect, and so, you know, I you know, I, I, you know, the levy, the support that we got from the community when the levy passed was awesome. And I see that as a support for the library that they love and value. And I believe that the vast majority of our library users understand that we are doing the best we can in a pandemic. We have continued to move forward, and we will continue to do so. And we, of anybody in the world, our library staff is passionate about doing the best we can for the public. So this has been kind of a painful conversation to be a part of, because that seems to negate that, not only me saying that, but the years of demonstrating that, that that has been the case. So, thank you.
Thank you, Joa. And Judy, you now have the microphone.
Okay, this is Judy Lindholm. I am a board member also. And I would like to say that Sarah and the staff have been very responsive. We've talked a lot about this issue, and it is not that we don't understand that, you know, there are pressures. I think that the responsive nature of the library is to be commended, and that we will move forward, and we want to hear from you. We want to have the public input and appreciate you.
Thank you, Judy. Anyone else?
Hi, can you hear me? This is Sarah Rossumlin, Library Director.
We can hear you loud and clear, Sarah.
...of the library, and I apologize that I'm not, I'm sorry, what?
We can hear you loud and clear. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I apologize for not being there in person, but I was on an already scheduled long-term trip, and so, and I wasn't able to get back. I want to thank Councilman Lotihoff and Maureen and Judy and Joa for being there. I would like to respond to Gary's concern, the levy, which was passed six years ago, did certainly, one of the issues was seven days a week was that service. And actually, we're going to add an hour. We're going to go from one to four to one to five, so we're adding an hour. We recognize the need. But also, many of the other proposals of the levy were to expand library outreach, which, and program offerings. And staff has done an amazing job with the outreach, both virtually and all the things that we're doing, the new services that we put into place, increased investment in the collection. The library hasn't really had an increase in their operating budget besides the staffing increase, the normal raises. And so we've always had to, you know, in the 10 years I've been there, we've had to absorb any cost of living, basically, when I say cost of living for materials and those types of things, we've absorbed that into our budget. Just the cost of books now, it's like $40 for a large, for a nonfiction book. And also keeping up with technology, which is vital for our community. So we do want to be responsive. We do want to hear your questions and concerns. And I do appreciate you giving me the time. And if there's anything else I can do long distance, I certainly will try.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else on the phone? Anyone else in the room?
Jeff Hutton, 1810 South Third Street. I'm representing the friends of the board of Marshalltown Public Library, and everything that Sarah, Judy, and Joa has said, and Maureen, we certainly echo. I would say this, and one of the things about the library and what we're so proud about as being friends, supporters, is that we understand that the library is so much more than a repository for books, or DVDs, or CDs. It really is a touchstone for this community. And I know Councilman Thompson agrees with that, because it really does bring the community together. There's services that they've done, whether it's children's services that Joa knows so full well about, so full well about, to members of a diverse population that we have, in trying to navigate, you know, this American way of life and understanding the different cultures. We think this library is top-notch. I've been fortunate in my position previously as a journalist that, and I've seen a lot of other new libraries across the country, no other library can top Marshalltown. And we understand that during this pandemic, Sarah and her staff, the library board itself, the trustees, I think, went beyond what they could to try to accommodate the public. It's hard to close the library doors. You know, the curbside service, the online efforts, I mean, I think the online efforts, and I can't, obviously Sarah and Jo would know better than I would, I think it's just multiplied tremendously over the last several months because of the pandemic. These are extraordinary times, unimaginable. No one can imagine that 15 months of being shut down and having to close doors and people staying at home. We know that the library brings people together. So we don't want the budget. Listen, if I had my way, we'd increase the budget twofold, threefold. But we understand, and I appreciate Councilman Thompson's concerns. I mean, money is an issue. Every department, every city issue should be reviewed. And so I appreciate the fact that he's looking into this, as I think all council members are looking into, all matters for the city. But the library, again, touchstone for the community, so very important. If we cut the budget 27%, cut it 5%, it has a direct impact on every citizen in this town who uses and needs this library. So that's my piece, and I appreciate Gary's effort just to at least look into it, and certainly Councilman Lotihoff's support as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O. Anyone else?
Tanya Gaffney, Library Board President. But today I'm actually going to speak to you as an educator at Lenahan Intermediate. So I have worked with this library for years, and the idea that it equals the hours the building is open is just not true. Joa took the Emerge program, which used to bring every sixth grader in Marshalltown into the building once a month. Look at online. She showed those students how to use all the online tools, how to check out books online, and then her staff pulls those books in the hours the library is closed. Just because the library is closed does not mean it's not serving our town. Thank you.
Thank you. You'll be glad to know that the jury went until Tuesday. You didn't get picked. You were lucky. Longest trial in my life. Anyone else? She was on the jury pool for the last jury trial we had a week and a half ago.
Jessica, I have a question for you. Is any of this discussion budget-driven because of our general fund?
Well, I think, you know, the reality is, as we're discussing the fiscal year, the fiscal year '22 budget is set. We do know that there will be some changes coming in fiscal year '23. We'll be having a discussion of our fiscal year '22 budget, probably either at the last meeting in June or the first in July. We did start out with a deficit. Backfill is now coming. There is an error in the way that the police wages were calculated for this next fiscal year, which makes things bigger. And so there's information we need to have before you to start making some decisions. So, but at this point in time, we are not asking any departments to make any reductions. But we, I feel as though, at least my mindset has changed with the vote of the legislature, that we need to be looking at, how can we start reducing our budgets now, so that it's not so painful in the process upcoming? And what are those ways that we can start doing that?
Yeah, the legislature did end last week. Backfill is just two four-letter words for most of us cities. Other comments by the public, as long as the mics are unmuted?
I forgot to say this. I just wanted to make clear that.
You may identify yourself.
I'm Joa, Joa with the Youth Services Manager. And I just wanted to make very clear that we very much value the work that our human resources person has done. And like all of us, what COVID has put on her as a one-person department with all the additional paperwork that she's had to do in COVID-related leave, we absolutely, there's, you know, we understand that some things are taking longer, just like it's taking longer for us to be open than we would like. So I just wanted to make that clear on the record.
Thank you. She does a bang-up job. Okay, does staff need any further direction? Or I think I heard somebody on the phone too. Let me leave the mic open another five seconds.
Sarah Rossumlin, Library Director. I think in the 10 years that I've been there, we've been through some dire budget issues, and the library has always been a great partner to the city. We are ready to work with the, you know, all the other department heads and see where, you know, if budget reductions are needed. We're certainly ready to step up and do what we can. And I like to think, you know, just like the library hosted the police department last week in their strategic planning, and now we're going to be working with YFS and the police department in a June meeting to better help that service. The library is always ready to do what needs to be done for the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Does staff need direction on this one, or should we figure that we've had the discussion?
It was purely a discussion item, so there's no direction.
Okay. Let's go on then to the American Rescue Plan update.
Okay. So the American Rescue Plan was originally approved by the president in March, and then it's taken quite some time for some information to get out. But I wanted to, we now have more information. We should actually be receiving our first payment from the state of Iowa here soon. Kind of the, the actual legislation didn't contain much, and so they came out with 151 pages of interim final rules, which, who knows what interim final rules means, but hopefully it means that any hypothetical things we want to do will still be allowed to be done as we move forward here. So at this time, so for the purpose of this, if anybody looked at the interim final rules, we are a non-entitlement government, because, or non-entitlement city, because we're below 50,000 in population, which means that our funding will go to the state, along with pretty much just about every other city in Iowa. And then the state will disperse it out in two payments, the first payment being in May of 2021, and the second payment being in May of 2022. They have not released, the US Treasury has not released the final numbers for the non-entitlement cities, but the National League of Cities had estimated that we'd be at 3.7 million kind of moving forward. And so that number is subject to change, give or take, a little bit. But that's generally what we're talking about. And so those 151 pages give you like four breakdowns of categories in which funding or spending can occur. And then basically, within those four categories, they describe a whole bunch of eligible uses and things. And so I want you to keep in mind that this has been written for states, counties, tribal governments, and cities all at once. So it's not as though there's, there's a lower level of, well, cities focus more on this, so this fits them. So please keep that in mind. So we're going to kind of work through these four sections here, and I'll throw out some different things of where we see some of this funding fitting. Yes?
3.7 total, or 3.7?
Total.
Okay. And estimate that it's just going to be split equally amongst the two years?
That's, that's what we know as of now, yes. So the first one to start with, oh, just another, and I mentioned this earlier to Councilmember Martin, I'm going to zoom in here a little bit. So what they initially said in one of the presentations that I attended was that your, your funding should focus on a qualified census tract. And so you Google qualified census tracts that HUD identifies, and Marshalltown does not have any. There are actually quite, or very few in Iowa in total. And so then the recommendation from the National League of Cities was, well, if you don't have that, you should look at where your areas, where you have high poverty. And we actually have an overall poverty rate, according to, I think it was the 2017 American Community Survey, a 14.8%. And there are three census tracts that are really driving this number higher. And so we have 9505, 9506, and then 9509, which are all right about 20% or higher. And so that's really been sort of the lens through which a lot of this has been looked at, as well as, you know, we could eliminate two projects where there was some infrastructure to be funded because they didn't fall in these three census tracts. So that's kind of the mindset that I want you to kind of take along as you're listening to this moving forward. So the first one we want to start with is premium pay. It could be pay, additional pay given to essential workers, work defined in as working in regular personal, in-person interactions, or physically handling, handling items that were handled by others. The positions that they call out in the guidance are transit and janitorial staff, but that definition would certainly involve other employees. There is also then, within this guidance for premium pay, that grants can be made to private employers as well. And I think as you think about that from, written for state, county, tribal government, city, that's probably looking at more of your state or other county governments or something more so than the city likely making private, grants to private employers. Ultimately, we're not recommending doing anything with the premium pay. We do have collective bargaining agreements in place for a majority of our employees. Those have not changed here and continue to be in place. Wages are a matter of collective bargaining, and so something would have to be discussed there. And again, I just really think it's the, probably your larger governmental entities who are receiving more funds than we are, that would be looking at private grant, or grants to private employers. Any questions on premium pay before I move forward?
No.
Any premium paid would still come out of the 3.7?
Correct.
Okay.
And then I had a quick question. So talked about the city of Marshalltown, so obviously outside of our jurisdiction to do anything from allocation, but do we have any estimate of what the county is getting as well, out of curiosity?
7 million is the number that I saw.
Okay. I assume they're having discussions, and are we tied in in any discussions on what their list of plausible projects are as well?
I don't know that they are having any discussions, but I did want to, you know, I feel like there are some things that we have within our proposal that could be discussion items at the county level as well, things that we'd be looking to do. I'm not sure kind of where the, there are no qualified census tracts in Marshall County. And so then as you start looking about what our county-wide programs that start to help things, I feel like we can provide some suggestions to the county.
And in following up on Councilman Isom's question, do we truly believe that we're going to see any of that $7 million, even though we're 27,000 of a 43,000 population county?
We can hope. So that's, that's where I think, as we've dug into this, there's certainly ways that this can help improve the lives of many residents in Marshalltown, and likely in many other of the communities in Marshall County as well. Okay, so then the next area I wanted to get to, because it's kind of the less nebulous one in some respects, revenue loss. And so I will, I'll go off tangent here, or on a tangent here, and just say that this was, this revenue loss that was available to all of us getting this money was the reason that was thrown out there by the legislature for taking away the backfill, because we can, we can, you know, basically backfill things with this. There's a very complicated calculation here that I need to shout out to Alicia's daughter, Madison. Accounting math is not calculation for counterfactual revenue, and so we needed some help with some formulas, and she was able to help us with those. This excludes utilities right now. The National League of Cities did say, though, that they believe that utilities should be part of this calculation, but right now they're not included. And so you had basically, you could choose 4.1% growth, or your annual revenue growth for fiscal years 16 through 18, which would be the three years prior to our, the start of what is our base year, basically. And so 4.1% is that higher number there. And so then there's four points in time where you get to calculate this money for your loss. And then it's crazy what they have defined as you can include it, and I go back to, this was written for states, counties, tribal governments, and cities. And so as I calculated it, looking at basically all of our revenue, excluding those that they specifically say, like bond proceeds, interest investments, refunds, things like that, take those out, the, that larger calculation on multiple funds was way more than we have allocated to us. And so as we, as I thought about this further and talked with Diana, what's the most important? It's our general fund, which includes some other funds too. So we started out very big, and we've narrowed it down to make this kind of an easier calculation to follow. And so the total, as we look at, you know, three points in time, is a little over $2 million. We didn't look at road use tax in this, but that's one that we could probably throw out there. The only way that you can fund any sort of road infrastructure is if you were doing it as a pay-as-you-go using cash, which road use tax is where we've, we've done that. But as we did our calculations, there's no loss in, in the current fiscal year, but we've also had some extra cash coming in from some things. There's a $240,000 loss at that 4.1% revenue growth for next fiscal year, and then it compounds to 700, more than 700,000 for the next fiscal year, and then ultimately in fiscal year '24, 1.2 million. And so this is their calculation. This is, you know, how they've set up this formula for everybody to project out in the same way. And I should say that this is still an estimate, because the point in time that we'll measure from is June 30th of 2020. I used the FY '21 budget amendment to kind of get sort of estimates of what we think those final numbers will be in the general fund. So estimates, again, things can change. But I wanted you to see then, how does this compare with, with backfill in the phase out over eight years that starts in the fiscal year that starts July 1, 2022, which is fiscal year '23? This will be the next fiscal year that we start budgeting for, this fall and next winter. And so as we look at it and then carry it out into basically fiscal year '25, which is when the money ends, so we have to have everything spent by 12/31 of 2024. So we're really looking at that first year in the general fund and emergency fund, just a $26,000 deficit, which I say just, and I shouldn't really even say that, because it's hard to cut any amount of money now without touching something larger like staff. '24, we get into 53,000, and then by fiscal year '25, we're upwards of 80,000 estimated at this point in time. So I wanted to give you the comparison of what, you know, what it looks like and how, you know, this, this chart up here that shows what we could set aside in the general fund actually does compare with what we're projecting those losses to be, specifically from backfill. So there is a big difference there, especially when you look at 240,000 being that first year of calculated loss. Any questions on this before I go to the next category? So the next category is infrastructure. Water sewer, which includes sanitary and storm sewer and broadband. They basically say, you know, we've got legislation that says what is an eligible project for a federal clean water act, and so water and sewer uses must align with that. No need to write anything new, just follow your current legislation. Again, this is where it came back to focusing on those census tracts that have that higher level of poverty. And so as Justin and I went kind of through things, we had two projects that we have defined, but Water Works had said there are definitely, if we wanted to give them some money, they gladly take it for some projects that they have kind of in the works. I never did get an answer of, is it a project that would be fully completed and we'd be fully expended by December 31st of 2024? So I'm not sure about what that would look like, but just know that Water Works has, has some projects, if there's any funding, we would like to pass their way as well. So as we get into the two projects, the first one, I do have Greg with Bolton and Mink here to talk about this one as well, and I will probably just turn it over to him right away so that he can...
Thanks, Jessica. Greg Bresser with Bolton and Mink. Kind of as part of the American Recovery Plan, wanted to give an update on the Edgewood Project. If you remember, the Edgewood Project, the, the goal of it is to extend Edgewood east and then connect it to South 8th Ave to provide a additional truck route for all of the industries in the area. One of the other big parts of Edgewood is we're going to be doing regional stormwater. What you're looking at here, and what I want to kind of do is give a background on to where the budget is today and where we're at. This was, the Marshalltown hired an engineering firm in 2005 to do a citywide regional stormwater study. One of the things they found was that, many of you, if you've been to Riverside Park, as you go, there is the, what we call the slough, the drainage area that heads towards the levee, that water is then pumped out via pump to the river. What they found was that those pumps are not large enough to handle the flow and to be able to adequately protect the adjacent area from flooding. So their original study, the areas in gray are areas where GBA had originally recommended to provide additional stormwater storage. So that's where we started from. They had a number of roughly 34 acre feet. To put that in perspective, if you have 34 acres, that's one foot deep, that's the volume that we're looking at for storage. Trying to figure out, okay, there we go. So what this model is, is it shows when we get a large rainfall, what happens, what floods, where does the water inundate? From talking with residents and city staff, we believe this is fairly accurate. One thing that we did found, and what's causing the issues, is that going back from that original GBA, GBA report, which was completed in the early 2000s, it was actually using, it's either 1998 or 1999 rainfall data. One of the things that's happened over the past 20 years is that rainfall data has changed. We have seen an increase in the, in the magnitude of the 100-year storm and how often that storm hits. And so as we have went through, and we have started looking at the sizing, what we're finding is that the original stormwater volume that was requested and looked at isn't large enough based on the increase in stormwater volume that we have. What this exhibit shows is we are building just on the south side of Woodland, we're not getting into the park at this point, building a detention basin where the original GBA report showed that, and where we thought we would be able to find enough storage. And it shows where that addition happened. So what we're finding is that based on the original GBA report and kind of our initial preliminary design, that we need additional space. So now we started kind of looking at where do we find that space, and how do we get there, and what's the cost for that? Can I zoom in?
You should, up on the toolbar there.
All right. Let's try that. That'll help, I think, a little bit. Nope, I'm clicking too fast, sorry. There we go. So what we started looking at was trying to find additional area to store water. And so the most cost-effective method is to expand the basin where it sits today. So what we did is we looked at an area directly north of that, which is Proposal Storage Area A, and then to the east, which is kind of where the existing compost, a bunch of the piles are located. So we've been talking with Justin about how that affects compost operations. So you can see, we have looked at coming down here and expanding the compost operation facility, expanding the hard surface area. We're looking at a milling treated area in there to provide a, a working area based on their operations and how they function. So this additional cost, and the cost is, involves both the additional drainage, additional earthwork to provide the drainage area, and removing the existing mulch that's piled there. We can't really find anybody to take that today with the duration that came through. It seems like all the cities have a lot of mulch. So now we've got to pay to get that taken out, and then putting in some new hard surface area. One thing that you will notice is, as we expand into these areas, we still end up with a little bit of flooding, but mainly isolated in the park. There is some on North 5th and 4th. They are more of an isolated area, which we are working with the city to come up with a potential future project to fully protect woodland. But at this point, cost-effective doing, on, working on the south of Woodland is the most cost-effective measure. What that does with cost, there we go. So where we end up is, the original budget was 6.2 million for the project, and what we ended up today, adding in the additional area, removing the mulch, expanding the compost area, we're just a shot, just a tad over 7 million. So that does make a shortfall of about $800,000 for the project. And as we look at it, that's because we had to expand that area for parking, or for stormwater storage, and then also through expanding that area, because it's so flat down in there, we picked the site up to get us some more storages too. So as we picked that site up, one of the benefits of that additional 800,000 is it added stormwater to, storm sewer to the entire roadway system. So now that's going to provide a lower long-term maintenance cost for city staff. We had looked at an option for doing a, more of a, what I would call a rural section with ditches through there. After talking with city staff, we chose, let's go to storm sewer, it's lower maintenance, we know there's additional cost to it, but that also increased the amount of stormwater volume that we were able to store. That's kind of some of the background questions.
Any questions or comments?
I don't know how to get back to your presentation.
So that is definitely the overview of one of the, the projects, and you can see kind of why it's needed. Before coming here to you, we obviously had a conversation with the Economic Development Administration, who had provided quite a bit of our funding. That was a specific 2018 disaster fund that's been fully allocated, and so there's nothing there. They did say, well, you could give up those funds and then try and reapply with the project all over again into our general process, but it probably wouldn't rank that highly compared to some other projects that we have. And so we would like to just keep what we have with the, the EDA at this point. Because it's stormwater related, it's not RISE-eligible, which focuses more on the roadway. So we did look at what are those other sources. How this fits into the American Rescue Plan funding, other than being in that area of high poverty, is that this addresses a climate change impact. So as Greg said, you know, we've seen rain-water rates increase in a 20-year period, and that's having a detrimental impact on this, this part of town. And so it's trying to address that, as well as then ultimately keep the area open for us to continue to maintain access to the wastewater treatment plant in a flood emergency. So that project is, is out there. It's one, as we go through kind of everything together, I will say this one needs an answer sooner rather than later. The federal, or EDA would like us to let them know what we're planning to do, and so we, we would like to be able to tell them what we're planning to do. The second project is kind of a...
Your Honor, if I may?
Go ahead.
So if it wasn't for the American Rescue Plan, when were you going to come to us and say, we need $813,000 to fix a flooding problem on a street that isn't built yet?
So it was really, it was kind of a, a timing thing. I'm trying to remember when we met with Greg and Casey, and I think it was in probably late February, early March, maybe even in March, I'd have to look at my calendar. And so we knew that this funding was out there, we were just waiting for those rules to be written, to make sure that we were giving you all of the options that were out there and were available, so.
So what would we do if that funding wasn't out there, or we choose not to use the funding?
We would probably talk about some bonding for the stormwater fund. I don't know that we would have enough cash to cash fund this, but we also do have a stormwater rate study coming up soon where you could build that into a model to try and cash fund it.
And this got missed originally because we used the wrong rainfall table?
So back in the 2004, 2005 was when the city hired a different engineering firm to do some preliminary design on this, and they were using rainfall data then. And so initially, all of this Edgewood project started as just a roadway project. That's, that's what we were able to get the RISE grant on, and it was then through starting the engineering work there that the recognition of there is, there's just no flow there, there's no, there's just nothing to get your water from point A to point B, and that was going to have to be part of the project. And so then we were able to get EDA funds in there. There was hydrology review that Bolton and Mink was doing, and that's where they were comparing basically, what, what we had is free information to give them in order to go after those grants, which was that 2004, 2005 study from a different firm. And they, they determined, no, that, that things weren't correct, and, and things had changed. I shouldn't say they weren't correct, things had changed.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
You're welcome. Go ahead.
The next project to talk about is kind of also, it's a preview of the downtown implementation plan. You know, this has been a process that's been going on since the beginning of the year, and I do expect that we will have a final report to you at a June council meeting to discuss further. But I wanted to put this out there before you now and kind of, you know, give, give away the surprise of what's recommended as the first phase. And so the first phase in that downtown improvement plan is recommended as State Street from 3rd Street to 3rd Avenue, so six blocks of work, with each block costing more than $1 million. There are some unique features on State Street related to our water mains. There's actually a water main on the south side and a water main on the north side. I think, I can't remember which one was installed in 1900 and which one was installed in 1924, but they're both at an age where you would want to address them before you would do any sort of new surfacing. And so the American Rescue Plan, again, they cover water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, and then the paving above them. And so there is quite a bit of paving, because you're bringing in paving from both sides, you're tearing up paving from both sides of the street, which basically instantly makes it a full reconstruction. And so as Bolton and Mink look through what would be the total eligible cost from this project alone, it'd be 4.5 million, which exceeds the allocation that we even have available. But we do think that this is a viable project for some funding to be allocated to. And so you will learn a lot more about this project, but, and what it all details in the coming month and months, but realistically, Phase 1 is, is State Street, and so you can only imagine what it looks like to tear up three, or six blocks of street in your downtown area to replace everything and make sure it's good for the next 120 years, I guess. So any questions I can answer on, on that right now? Now we start to get into the other stuff, where again, you've got all of these eligible uses that have been provided, but most of them do not fit cities. We do not do public health in the state of Iowa, and so there's just a lot of stuff that just doesn't fit us. But there are a few specific things that were identified under eligible uses of public health impacts, which we got pretty excited about. And so the first one, there is this eligible use for behavioral health care, including mental health treatment, substance misuse treatment, other behavioral health services, hotlines or warm lines, crisis intervention, overdose prevention, et cetera. And so as we looked at what is the definition of impact, what does impact provide, that is truly fits into that category there. And so we looked at where we're at currently. There have been some grant funds that YSS has been able to secure to help in this current fiscal year. There's $30,000 to use between May 17th and June 30th. So that means that our contribution of $150,000 gets spread a little bit farther down the line in terms of time towards the end of fiscal year 2022. And so there's even more funding coming in next year. I don't think it's been publicly announced, so I don't want to steal David's thunder on that one, but there, there is definitely some more funding that we'll be talking about in the future, which YSS has been diligent about securing to make sure that we can keep this program operational for as long as possible. And the American Rescue Plan funds will help that too, basically through the fiscal year '25, December 31st of 2024 type of timeframe. So as we looked at this fiscal year '22, we believe will be covered with what remains of our initial $150,000 contribution, along with the grant funds that they have received. So we didn't see that there's any additional funds needed for fiscal year '22, but for '23 and '24, we could put $150,000 towards that, as well as in fiscal year '25, another $75,000 to continue this program. Any comments or questions before I go on to the next one?
I would highly recommend doing that. That's a really, really good project.
The next one, we'll talk about all of these together too, kind of towards the end of the presentation. So the next one, Led Hazard remediation...
I would highly recommend doing that. That's a really, really good project.
Okay, the next one. We'll talk about all of these together to kind of towards the end of the presentation. So the next one, lead hazard remediation. Again, there's a focus on mitigating impacts in low-income communities. Funds should impact LMI households with children. Guess what the HUD, the HUD lead hazard grant already does? And so we already have existing projects which we're not able to fund. Michelle did some calculations, and so far, one-third of our projects are coming in over budget, which means there's a gap that goes beyond the HUD funding that we can provide. And if the owner can't provide or fill that gap, then the project just doesn't happen. And so there's an estimate of probably 43 projects that over basically the total of what we're contracted to do at a gap of likely eighteen thousand each, based on what we've seen. As Michelle and I talked, she realized, like, asking for eight hundred thousand dollars was probably not the best use of these funds. But at least if we could get some money in the next fiscal year to try and go back and hopefully be able to fund some of the projects that we've had to say no to, knowing that construction prices are changing all the time here, and it's become a pretty volatile environment, that there there are some projects that we could fund and projects coming forward through that program that could continue to receive funding. So narrowed it down to two hundred thousand dollars over two fiscal years, because the current grant is set to end in fiscal year 23 as well. So that's why it's not looking extending anything beyond that. But again, a program we're already operating where there is a gap that could have an impact on low to moderate income households in the community. Now we get into economic impacts, which, again, a whole bunch of stuff there that's written for states and for counties and for other things, but not necessarily for cities. But there are a few different things to to throw out there for your consideration. So in determining assistance to households, you have to look at a household being impacted by COVID-19. If a household is low to moderate income, they are automatically deemed to be impacted by COVID-19, which means that those sense, three census tracts have a pretty vast area with an assumption that basically would would operate there. So as we talked about things, and Michelle reminded me that this was something many years ago that the city had done, there was a neighborhood beautification program that this would be focused on our three high census or three high-poverty census tracts, not looking to take on significant home repairs, like a new roof, new windows, you know, the the big stuff, but looking at addressing smaller issues that really impact the aesthetics and the accessibility into properties. Initially, this conversation did start as, you know, we're going to be submitting this RISE grant application. And as you look along the corridor, we we like to assume that there will be an investment in in property along the corridor as we start to make some of those changes to our public infrastructure. But when you really look at that area being an area of persistent poverty with a number of low to moderate income individuals, that's not likely to happen without some sort of catalyst being there to make it happen. And so that's where we really see that a neighborhood beautification program could be, could be that catalyst. But again, it doesn't have to be limited to the Highway 14 corridor. We just think that's one location in one of those fiscal years where it would have kind of a really big impact. But there's three census tracts for which this program could be implemented. So we've just put in kind of fifty thousand dollars a year just to put something out there. No one really has time to administer a new program, so if we could find a nonprofit to partner with, we would certainly seek to do that.
So what I hear you saying is Mike was supposed to pay me fifty thousand dollars for picking up trash that morning?
Yeah.
No?
We're looking at more than than trash pickup. One of the things that I like to think, especially when you start talking about the the three census tracts in total, we've got a number of properties that still have dead trees, damaged trees, and stumps remaining in their yards, front yards, backyards. And those are detrimental to being able to, you know, plant new trees, do other things. What if this is just as simple as helping people get those things removed? How much of an impact does that have on the community on how things appear? And I think that's just really a starting point. There's so much that could be done if you partner it with volunteer labor and really figuring out what are those project scopes that could occur. And so there's, there's definitely more to think about here, but we thought about this being a program that could have a really big impact in an area of our community that tends not to see a lot of individual investment in properties as a collective. You might see a property that, you know, improved here or there, but there's just not raising all boats at once. Another area, I kind of made this two projects, but there's no numbers here. And so I wanted to just kind of throw these out there, knowing that there's still more discussion to to have. We do have a low-income housing tax credit project that has been submitted to the Iowa Finance Authority that is going to address senior housing, and it is located in the census tract for which the hospital is in. We know that as soon as they get their sort of preliminary review of their application, which was due earlier this month, that that's when they're going to come to us and say, can you help us with funding? To Councilmember Isom's comment and Councilmember Thompson, I think supporting affordable housing development within the county is something that really could be a request that we would bring forward or this project would bring forward to the county as well. I think there was the tall corn towers that the county helped participate with some funds and that from their low to moderate income TIF funds. So there's a history there. There's now funding there. So hopefully we can find some ways to partner on helping another project in Marshalltown. The other thing that we've talked about, but we haven't really talked about it, you know, in a lot of detail, because we don't have detail, we will start receiving, in a hypothetical scenario, let's just say that there are in the development on West Merle Hibbs, that the first year a house is newly assessed is January 1st of 2023. That means that we'll be able to start collecting that increment in fiscal year 25, which means we'll have the low to moderate income set aside, as well as then developer payment. So fiscal year 25 is foreseeably the first year that we can see those LMI funds starting to come in. Knowing that this money can start or can support low to moderate income housing improvements, I just wanted to throw it out there that do we, do we spend some time as a, as department heads, community council, designing a low to moderate income housing program and what that looks like, and then figure out how to put some of these funds to it for fiscal year 22, 23, 24, to really get things a head start before we get some ongoing funds in 25. So no idea what it costs, no idea what it looks like. You know, as we talk about infill housing, there's so many opportunities that we could be looking at there, but it's certainly an option that's out there. So that's kind of the end of the project list, as I'll call it. But we do know that there's going to be some things that are not answered quite yet. There, it's, it's an interesting thing. There's one question that the Treasury proposes about should demolition qualify as something within each of these census tracts as being a neighborhood improvement and an area of persistent poverty? We think yes, but it's not for sure yet. We also don't know quite what federal requirements will apply to us, but we know there will be some. And then just the one that they really spell out is that we'll have annual reports due basically September 30th of each year, except for this year, it'll be October 31st. So I'm going to end on this slide, and I'll zoom in a little bit more so it's before you. I should not have put a total number on this, and I should not have totaled these on the bottom, because realistically, I put the two general fund revenue replacement options up there, and it's kind of a one or the other. But here's realistically where things start to tie together. And I just want to see how you feel about what's been proposed. If there's anything that's a, that's a definite yes, we should start moving forward. I'll, I'll use what Councilmember Lottehoff said with impact. We talked about how, you know, we have an existing agreement with them. We would probably amend that agreement to extend the program further, which would be something coming back to you at a point in time with a resolution. Same, I'm not sure on the lead hazard remediation, but there'd be some other things. So just want to throw it out there, get some feedback and and figure out kind of where where you're all feeling we stand right now.
Any input for Jessica?
Just a little bit of information.
Yeah.
I mean, I think there's a lot of options, and I think this is going to tie into a lot of the discussion with regards to what we do from borrowing and everything else moving forward, too, because I think it has a direct impact on some of the decisions that are made there and how we tie in the best use of both funds to drive some alignment between some of those. I agree with Mike that I think the impact thing is is a good thing. I mean, I think there's a little bit of question mark on what some of that funding will look like and best served of what that dollar amount looks like. I agree, as we're doing the Highway 14, Third Ave corridor, that some of that beautification, I think, is important. I think the biggest question I have is, out of our control, but county's possible engagement in some of the stuff, specifically on the LMI housing program or the project support on some of that stuff, which is obviously a significant number and has a direct impact on the overall funding. Personally, I'm still chewing on the State Street Water Sewer on what that looks like. I just, that's a, it's a big number. I mean, that eats it, eats up everything. I don't know that I necessarily agree it's the best use of this funding for some of the other options that are on there.
Your Honor?
Mr. Martin?
I like what Gary has said about county. And if we can voice upon them, if you will, some ideas that are beneficial and meaningful for long term and so on, they're getting quite a bit more than the city. And the city is a major, what, two-thirds of the county population, roughly. So I, I look forward to putting, you know, some ideas their way or in collaboration. The money's out there for, for eligible projects that have a favorable impact. So it would behoove us to put forward ideas that way as well. Thank you.
Your Honor?
Mr. Thompson, go ahead.
I like the idea of a little bit of money flowing towards the infill development in the neighborhoods and, you know, I don't know, that low to moderate income housing, but only if we can somehow include some progressive changes in the zoning and the building code rewrite to allow for some smaller houses. Because I'm hitting a brick wall with trying to find contractors that can build houses feasibly, you know, in those vacant lots, to get them, you know, at a cost to where they're attractive. I don't think it'd take a lot of money, but something. And, you know, even though I said earlier, we're 27,000 of the 43,000 population, what I don't know is, you know, our taxes are split. So obviously, we're not generating two-thirds of the tax revenue for the county, correctly? Is that correct?
I have no idea.
So we need to know what percentage we're generating in their revenue to know what we can, you know, I like the idea that Mr. Martin said, we need to have a conversation with them, you know, what, what ideas they have for their seven million. And I think it's fair to, to go to them with whatever percentage of tax revenue we're generating for them, we should expect that much back in revenue stream. Yeah, there's a lot of decisions we're going to need to make here. You know, so that's my two cents. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
To to pose the question specifically about Edgewood, is there any desire to use these funds for that project?
Yes, sir.
Have we had any developers come forward that are looking to build on Edgewood? Are we building it just to reroute the truck traffic?
I've had contact from a trucking company out of Minnesota that is, they want to be near JBS. So that's the only contact that I've had so far.
I thought you had one with a gas station, too.
We were going to have one with a gas station.
Whoops. Okay. So right now, we have two developers that are looking, I just don't want to build a road if we're, you know, we don't have a use for it.
Yeah, you know, you, you bring up a really good point, Councilmember Thompson. And I had a meeting on Friday with the Economic Development Manager from the Greater Des Moines Partnership and the Economic Development Manager from Alliant Energy, who kind of manages our territory. And I had no idea what the meeting was about to begin with, but they, they really wanted to talk about how there are so many projects that they can't even, Marshalltown can't even put a request for proposal in on, because we do not have the industrial land available to be able to submit. And so they were not familiar with the Edgewood Industrial Park. They were very excited when I told them about it, even though it is a limited amount of land. But it's what can happen when you look at that bigger vision of taking Edgewood all the way over to 18th Avenue and what that potentially opens up. And I know that Justin and Bob Ranson are probably not wanting to hear that, but that we need to find a new place to apply bio solids if we're looking at really truly that being developable for industrial use. But as I look at it, what is the, it's really hard to go out and get options on farmland right now. And that's where I think the struggle has been with a few different organizations doing that. And so we kind of control our own destiny in the world of industrial lots that are available moving forward. So I really do think it's, it's more than a road. It's having more than 25 acres available for a project.
Is it cheaper, rather than make that catch basin where it is and lose the opportunity to develop that land, is it cheaper to widen the creek, the slough in, in the park?
I don't know that it's cheaper, but I think in, in some of those initial concepts, you're taking up pretty much most of the parkland then, I think, was what it was showing. So
Yeah, we, we, Council, we did look at that as far as how much parkland we would use. Currently, right now, the issue that we're going to run into is that for the EDA funding that we have, we have a certain environmental impact area that we're allowed, and we are, that gets into an area that we don't have allowed impact. And so then it starts to bring, because that's a park ground, now we have to start doing a little bit more background to figure out how that park was originally funded. If there's ever been any federal funds in it, turns into, it's called a 4F property, which we don't want to play with on, on this project, because that puts a lot more restrictions on what can and can't be done there. So.
Is eight hundred thousand dollars a lot for retention pond? What'd we pay for the ponds on the south side of town?
So the
This seems like a lot to me to, for a pond.
The majority, the, the cost is kind of split between digging the pond, but then also raising the site up. Because as you look at, we've got 60 acres, and we start to raise it even one foot, that's a lot of dirt to raise up. And we're so flat down there, you can walk down there and you can, you can, there, there's only about two foot of elevation change over the whole site, and it actually flows away from the river at points. So by raising that up to be able to put that storm sewer in, that's what really drives that cost is, is to be able to do that. We looked at trying to do the, the urban ditches through there, but maintenance long-term, especially if it's going to be a commercial industrial use, you don't want culverts there that they're just going to, they're just going to tear through those, and it's going to turn into a long-term maintenance issue as well.
Thanks, Your Honor.
And to kind of, you know, give you the idea of that, think about ditches with trash in them that somebody's got to go in and get at some point, as well as then Greg mentioned the culverts, every driveway would be crossing this ditch. And so that's where the, the urban storm sewer that you just don't see is what seems to make more sense for that area and maintaining, maintaining an area in good aesthetics for the long term.
Okay. I don't think we've unmuted the mics on this one yet, have we?
No, we have not.
Let's do that.
The lines are unmuted. My specific thing is I'd like to be able to email our EDA contact tomorrow and say that we've committed, you know, informally, not through a resolution or anything, to use American Rescue Plan dollars for that additional stormwater infrastructure. And so I want to make sure if I send that email, I'm not doing anything that a majority of you are not in favor of at this point.
Will four of you object to that?
Okay. I think what we'll plan to do is sort of dissect some of these a little Okay. I think what we'll plan to do is sort of dissect some of these a little bit further and bring some back to you at the meetings in June to talk about further what that could look like. I think we'll know by then what is being asked for this low-income housing tax credit project, so we can fill in some gaps there. And then, I'm open if anybody really does want to start talking about what a low-to-moderate income housing program could look like. We do have folks at the Region 6 Housing Trust Fund who would be great to be part of that conversation as well. I'd love to get a group together to really start talking about what that could be, because it just jumpstarts us, you know, two years, three years ahead of time from what we would be starting.
Jessica, didn't Tom Diamond really start something along those lines, like maybe four or five years ago, with the properties out on Campbell Drive?
I don't believe so. Oh, oh, yes, yes. So there is Wandering Creek, yes. And so there's still work that has to happen there to really make that happen. But there are some initial dollars from that that we do have on hand, because we did start that to repay our legal expenses with that, so.
I remember going to some meetings with Tom back then to utilize this type of funding. And then those taxes being, then going to the low-to-moderate income for those properties to build smaller homes, which initially goes into that same thought process of the zoning and everything to allow for smaller homes. It was a concept that he was working on at that point.
Yeah, and so that, we do have a development agreement on that. The developer has not done anything. That's actually harming our debt capacity. And so, I've been in contact with our bonding council to just see what we can do to get that off of our debt capacity, because that's $1.3 million that you can't borrow at this point, because it's sitting out there as an obligation of TIF funds, though there is no work happening there and hasn't been for a number of years.
It's probably been four or five years, at least four.
So...
Unfortunately, but...
But if there is anybody who's interested in starting a conversation about the low-to-moderate income housing, please let me know. I think that's something that we can get started on. It seems like there's a lot of interest in being able to get something started.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess the timeline of discussion, as this progresses, kind of your expectations from the council to prioritize and, I guess, determine a path forward? What does that look like? I mean, is this over the next two months that we're going to be really trying to drive some concrete details into...
Yeah, I would say it's probably like a two-month timeframe. I keep thinking, you know, even with the calculations on the revenue loss, we have to wait until our June 30th time period hits for that. And so, you know, it's probably, we'll have some more, you know, better numbers on things moving forward. I expect we'll figure out, is 3.7 million really 3.89 million? Or 3.69 million? What, I mean, what does that look like? And then be able to really start doing some better calculations, so. But I think that's where we might be bringing back some of those. I'll probably do some talking with all of you in the next three weeks about, is there anything that, you know, that you feel so strongly about to bring back forward to that June 14th meeting for some more discussion or contract amendment or something like that, so.
Jessica, when do you expect to draw the county into this? To have, should it be just a joint meeting to discuss how we're going to work together on this? Or if they're willing?
Yeah, I mean, there's some initial questions that I can put out there and just see if they've even had any internal conversations about what's possible and what they'd be looking at, and just see what their timeframe is. I do feel like I wanted to get this out to you ASAP because of, well, because we have a three-week delay and because that Edgewood project is in there and needs an answer sooner rather than later. So I'm not sure that others are maybe moving at the pace that we're moving in terms of identifying things. But I do know we'll get a request for that low-income housing tax credit project. And I think that's at least one of those projects to throw out there of, wouldn't it be nice if we could fund 50/50 or something to that effect?
I would say 100. On the county.
Well, it's beneficial to them as well.
Okay, thanks. We're at that time now to move on to public comment. So I need to read another proviso. Members of the public may make comments on any item that was not on the agenda during this time. Approach the mic, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes unless longer comment is authorized by me. Direct your comments to the mayor and council as a whole, and we shall not engage in discussion or debate on items raised by members of the public, and no action may be taken on those items in order that we comply with the open meetings laws. The microphone is open, the phones are unmuted, and somebody's walking to the podium, so.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Duder. I live at 1703 South 3rd Street. I read the article on traffic control, what could be coming downtown for the one-way streets that they want to change to two-way. I was very much taken by the amount of money that was sitting, that is proposed in these. I discussed this last Friday with Jessica on the phone as to where the funds were coming from, and she didn't have a clear understanding at this point. Then I read later that same day Robert Hibbs' letter to the editor about the two-way streets not needed. And the thing that really stuck out to me was, two years ago, a citywide survey found the great majority of residents opposed changing our current streets. If that survey, if his recollection of that survey is true, it begs the question, who is everybody listening to instead of the great majority? Okay? My street was scheduled for resurfacing many years ago, and they ran out of money. And it's never been touched since that time. Talking with Jessica, I found out that some streets need greater repair at greater cost. And so, you're putting the money towards streets that can be done less expensively with resurfacing and stuff. I understand that concept. But when do the people, the taxpayers, and I emphasize the word taxpayers, that live on the streets that need those repairs, get their bang for the tax buck? Okay? Then the last thing I want to say to that is we need more transparency on this issue. I would like to see a published list of streets that are being ignored at this point, such as Edgeland from Center to 6th Street is in pathetic shape. The taxpayers on the right, on those streets have the right to know that their tax money is not being spent in their neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the chambers wish to approach the mic? It looks like we are unmuted, are we not? Oh, Joa, sure, hi.
Since I'm here, anyway. So, Joa Lovell, I live at 103 North 15th Street. And I just wanted to say that I live very close to the West End Park, and I went to an event there this weekend. And I'm really excited by the support for West End, both by the, you know, the council with the Parks and Rec, but also the 13th Street Committee and the Alliance working with some events there. And so I think that's something to be really proud of. And I also just want to express some support for the impact program. At the library, we've already had some very positive experiences with the MPD, NYSS, who we both worked with separately, but I feel like their partnership makes them stronger together. So thanks for that.
Thank you, Joa. And back to the microphones and phones, are those unmuted?
Yes.
Okay, let's leave them for another 10. Very good. The time is 8:09 PM. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.